Audio check, audio check, one, two, one, two. Audio check, audio check, one, two, three, four, one, two, three, four.
I can hear you.
I can hear you as well.
I can hear you.
Mic check, mic check.
They were, they were going through shiver when I came.
Yeah, I'm good, sorry.
I'd like to call the Springford area school board meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. One nation under God.
The Springford Board of School Directors believes the community has the right to bring before the board issues and concerns they may have about items on the agenda or about items in general which affect the district or their children. Because of this belief and philosophy, the board will schedule a time at the beginning and conclusion of every meeting to have an opportunity for community members to share their concerns with the board. At the start of the meeting, members from the public may comment on agenda items only. The school board will move through the meeting agenda, then at the end, when prompted, there will be a time for public comment. This meeting is being filmed to be broadcast on community cable channels and online. Individuals attending to make public comments should be aware that they are being videotaped. Speakers will be asked to state their name and address before making their comment.
All right, I'd like to welcome everyone to the March 21st work session. Before we go into announcements, Mrs. Bickert, could we get a roll call specifically who is on Zoom with us today?
Yes, this evening, Dr. Wright and Mrs. Earl are on Zoom. Everyone else is here in person.
Thank you. So as for announcements, the board held an executive session at 6:30 prior to the start of this meeting to discuss personnel. And then secondly, I want to acknowledge that today is World Down Syndrome Day. World Down Syndrome Day is a global awareness day that's been officially observed by the UN since 2012. The date of this day being the 21st day of the third month signifies the uniqueness of the triplication of the 21st chromosome which causes Down Syndrome. So I want to thank everyone in the district today who rock their socks to help drive awareness of this day. Celebrate all the ways in which those with Down Syndrome brighten our lives and how together we can empower people around the world to advocate for full inclusion in society for people with Down Syndrome. So thank you for partaking. Any other announcements, Mr. Rizzo? So with that said, we'll move into public to be heard on agenda items only. As normally, we will balance comments in the room with those on Zoom. And we can start with in-person. Do we have anyone in the room that would like to approach the podium? Oh, okay, I actually have that down here under presentation, student rep being the first one. Okay, my apologies, ladies. Do you have any announcements? We do not have any announcements this evening. Wonderful. And thank you, Mrs. Zasowski. So with that said, do we have anyone in the room that would like to approach a podium for public comment on agenda items? Okay, do we have anyone on Zoom?
At this time, we didn't have anybody in Zoom.
Okay. Yeah. So with that said, we're going to move on to our presentations and we have two presentations on deck for tonight. So first up, we'd like to welcome to Brook staff to the podium. We have Dr. Moyer, president, I'm sorry, principal at Brook Elementary and Mr. Lori Ramquist, teacher and robotics club advisor to give an update on the pilot program at Brook.
Good evening. Thank you for a short moment of your time. This presentation is two years in the making. So Mr. Lori and I were on the agenda to present to the board in late March of 2019. We got bumped from the agenda. We then were going to be on the agenda about six weeks ago, and we also got bumped from the agenda. So we're back. So persistence has kept us coming back. We're here this evening to give you an update on our elementary robotics program. It's a pilot program. Before I turn it over to Mr. Lori, who will wow you with a really wonderful presentation, I just want to give a brief history of how we got here. Last year, in the middle of the winter, Mr. Lori came to me with an idea of how to enhance our already existing RamQuest robotics program with an after-school club. So I tasked him with coming up with what that would look like. He did. We brought it to the extracurricular committee last year and presented what an after-school club for fourth graders would look like. Mr. Lori, being the thrifty person that he is, was able to use some of our existing resources. And our home and school was willing to offset some of the costs. The extracurricular committee was favorable to the idea. We brought it to the board, who gave us permission to pilot it this year. So we've held two after-school clubs so far, and at this point, I'm going to turn over Mr. Lori, who will tell you a little bit more about what it looks like.
Thank you very much, and thank you for giving us the time this evening to talk about this great program and to actually show you some of the great work that our students completed while they were in the club. So tonight, we're going to talk about a couple things. First off, we have to show you a video so you can see, like I said, the great work that they were doing, the problem-solving, the teamwork. They really did a nice job, and of course, Andrew Rothermeyer always does a great job making everyone he takes, makes videos of look great. We're going to talk about what we needed to make the club work, resources, things like that. We're going to talk about how it went, and I'm going to give you a spoiler. Well, it went really well. And talk about possible future steps, because like Dr. Moyer mentioned, this is a pilot program. So where do we go from here? All right, so we're going to go ahead. Oh, of course, any questions or comments from you, we always welcome them. So we're going to take a look at the video. My name is Zach Lori, and I'm a RamQuest teacher at Brook Elementary. And I'm also the advisor for the robotics club here at Brook Elementary School. It really started with the student interest in robotics during RamQuest. So we do many things in RamQuest, but robotics is probably one of the kids' favorite building. We noticed that at the upper levels, there's a lot of interest in robotics, and they even do a competition yearly. So we thought, what a great, great thing to start at the elementary level. Get kids interested at the younger age, thinking about the competition and solving missions, and then seeing where that takes us by the time they get to high school.
So trying to, all of us were trying to at least have the, help Dash circle around the cup 10 times. We're learning how to like program robots and then how to use like the computers to program them. So we're doing, my team actually completed this challenge is to make it, to make Dash go towards the cup and go around in the circle around the cup for 10 seconds. And it was honestly challenging to get the cup just to like make Dash not bump into the cup. We code and we use all the like drive controls, and then eventually we put together some pieces and it works out.
It's a set of five missions that take roughly two hours to complete, give or take, where the students are given a scenario. You have to start your robot here, and it has to do something. It might be it has to push a couple of things on the game mat. It might be that it has to rotate and orbit around an object, a capo, or whatever it is that you put on the mat. The, the really interesting part is it's built on a problem. They're not given too many hints, although sometimes I do end up giving them hints, but they really have to work together to problem solve. So they're given that problem. How do we solve it? What do we do? How do we code our robot to make this work? This year, we have a ton of students interested. We ended up with about 56 kids who wanted to sign up. We split them into two groups, two large groups, preferably smaller groups for the future, but we didn't want to say no to anyone. So we have 27 kids in the current group. We're finishing up soon and starting session two with the remaining group of children. The goal really is to provide the kids with a fun after-school activity that really helps them work on teamwork and problem-solving skills. With, with the hope that it builds interest in robotics and engineering, of course, but also helps them with critical thinking skills, working together, all those things that they need to, to be able to do to be successful in school.
We're trying to make it circle around the cup, but it, it's not working because something's wrong with the wheel speed. So I'm going to try it again and see if it works, but I don't think it will. We have it going forward at 90, and then we have it turn at a certain degree angle. So we can set it into the circle, and then we start it going forward a little bit, and then we have it go super fast.
All right. That works really well. Now, question for you. This is, this is perfect. There is a way to do it without these two steps right here. You definitely found a good solution. Leave these two blocks out if you change the speed of the wheels.
And make that go slow.
Currently, we're just use, just using the club with our fourth graders. Technically, you could extend it to other ages, but we knew there would be so much interest just from our fourth graders that we decided to start there. The Wonder League does create missions based on age level. So if other schools would choose to use that, that same challenge, you could potentially do it with second and third graders and then have a fourth grade group. What I personally would love to see is for this to grow. So maybe we start with fourth grade across the district and potentially, as, as long as the interest level is still there, see some kind of robotics club, perhaps competition at the middle level. Ultimately, knowing that it's going to continue into the high school where they do the VEX, I believe it's the VEX Robotics Competition, which the kids, the students there absolutely love. So I'd love to see it grow and really expand across the district. That would be my hope. All right, so as you, as you could see in that video, they do a great job with it. They, they work really well on teams and they solve, they solve the problems, not always right away. And to me, that's actually a good thing. That means that I'm doing my job. Things shouldn't be so easy all the time that they never have to persevere. So I, I love when I hear students like here say, something's wrong, but I'm not sure what it is yet. To me, that's, that's gold. That, that's why we're here. And a couple of things, I, I did get a chance to go to the VEX competition this year, and I was, it was absolutely amazing. My three-year-old didn't allow me to stay for very long, but the little bit I saw was, was fantastic. So hopefully, we have some future students who will be, continue to be interested in and go into that in the future. So what did we need to, to make this happen? Well, several things. First off, an advisor, in this case, it was me, and supportive administration. So Dr. Moyer, I want to give you credit for, for working with us to get this idea off the ground. Upper administration as well, and, and of course, in the end, board approval for the pilot program. So thank you very much. For each team, we needed a Dash robot, which at Brook we had, and we also needed a mission mat. And you really need one mat per team. Our home and school was generous as always and purchased those for us, so I'm, I'm very thankful for our home and school as well. We needed a device for coding, and due to the changes in our technology over the last year and a half, one of the real positives out of all this is we have devices for the students to use. In our case, we used Chromebooks. We needed internet access, so no, no issues there. Our buildings are wired for wireless internet. And we needed some challenges. We utilized the Wonder League Robotics Competition, which actually is an international competition. We didn't participate in the national or international part. We used the missions at the local level. We did need a large space, and we have a, a great place in, in the gym at, at Brook Elementary School. And of course, one of the most important ingredients for all of this is interested and excited students, and we had a ton, as you heard. We had 56 students, which was fantastic and really challenging at the same time, but I loved the interest in it. It was fantastic. In terms of how it went, I already gave you a spoiler. It went really well, and I'm really happy to say that because I wanted it to go well, and I wanted the students to really enjoy it, and I, I believe they did. We did have 56 students that participated. We're actually working with the second cohort now. We finished our, our seventh session, so we have three more Mondays of missions to, to hopefully accomplish and, and figure out. Like I said, 10 meetings per cohort. From the feedback that I've gotten from parents, both verbally and written, it's, it's being well-received. The students are really excited and they look forward to Mondays. Maybe not so much all the work during the day, but definitely the robotics club at, at the end of the day. I believe it was challenging and fun for the students, and again, to me, that's an important part of it. I want it to be challenging. I don't want them to be able to solve the mission in, in five minutes and say, oh, that was easy. I love hearing, I'm not sure what to do. I might give a couple hints to keep them going. I never want them to experience frustration, but a little productive struggle is, is a fantastic thing. We did have a few challenges just in the, the coding knowledge. We did have a few challenges just in the, the coding knowledge that the students have because of some challenges over the last few years. And I know the, the term a lot of people use is learning loss. To me, it's learning delay. And I'm starting to see the benefits of being back in person, working with coding in school. My second cohort's doing even better than my first cohort with the challenges. So I can already see them catching up on some of those coding skills, which is fantastic to see. The size of the cohorts was a little challenging. I had seven teams. Most of them had four students per team. Ideally, you would have three students per team because it maximizes their, their time to code, their time to really be involved. When you add that fourth person, they're still involved. But to me, I, I would prefer three, again, to, to increase that time on task and the, the time that they can actually spend coding. So the pilot is almost over. That begs the question, where do we go from here? And I'm hoping, and I hope you agree, that programs like this should continue here at Springfield. So should Robotics Club continue at Brook? Yes, please. I hope, I hope so. And I think the students do as well. Should Robotics Club spread to the other Springfield Elementary Schools? I think that would be great. And I, I, just based on the interest at Brook, I can't imagine the students at Upper Providence, Spring City, Oaks. I can't imagine, and all the other schools as well. I can't imagine they wouldn't be just as interested. Should we have a culminating event, maybe a district-wide event for an after-school Robotics Club? That would be really great. That would be cool. I do think we should, if we, if we go this route, give the program a little time to, to gain its footing just so that the students and the staff that are involved can really understand how it works. But then, why not? I think that would be fantastic. Based on the, the VEX event, I, I can't imagine we wouldn't have interested people that would want to attend and, and see the great things that are happening. Should we extend Robotics Club up or down to other grades? I really think that's worth considering. We could start at the younger level and see where we can go through, throughout the years. I'm hoping that some of my fourth graders this year that participated are going to be the students in six-ish years who are then working at the VEX competition and really wowing everybody with the great robots. They really were cool if, if you didn't get a chance to go. So I'm really hoping that this will, will continue to evolve, continue to grow. And I really think it was a great investment for, for the students at Brook Elementary. So again, thank you to all of you, and, and of course, the, some former board members as well, who approved the pilot program. I really do appreciate it, and I guarantee you, our students do as well. So I've just talked a lot. I've given you a lot to think about. I absolutely welcome any questions that you might have. Some of them might be Dr. Moyer questions, but please let us know if you have any questions, any comments. We, we would love to hear your feedback. Just briefly from my colleagues on the board. So when the update was presented at the Extracurricular Committee, and I didn't realize it was six weeks ago, you were bumped again. Sorry, Dr. Moyer. But I felt like it was very important, all things considered, for all of you and the general public to get in, to get firsthand visibility into this. I believe the next step will be for us to huddle at the committee level and figure out what a recommendation would be. So just in case you're thinking about what's next, that would be what's next. So thank you very much for coming in. That video is fantastic. I think this program is, is something really exciting.
Thank you, Dave. Or Mr. Schaefer, I'm sorry. And let me just say, as a elementary parent, as a board member, I am really excited to hear that the success of this program was more than you anticipated. And frankly, you know, the fact that we're instilling the love of the sciences at an early age to hopefully foster that as they get older into the secondary grades is a wonderful thing. I do want to defer to anyone else at the table here that has questions or comments for Mr. Laurie or Dr. Moyer.
I have a question, but I just wanted to add, as a Brook parent with a second grader and a kindergartner, that you definitely have interest in the lower grades because I know that both of my kids are dying to do robotics. So you can see them at the door sometimes on Monday nights. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
This is really, really impressive, and I appreciate that you put the A in STEAM and not just STEM because the importance of the design mind in building these robots and thinking about how to improve them is awesome. And I get to talk to scientists at work sometimes, and we talk about what inspired them to do what they do. And it always comes back to moments in childhood, whether it was dad teaching them acting out math problems or a particular event at a school, something like this, or a robot. And I think how important it is to see kids doing this so young because it's like you're saying, they're calculating in their mind how to fix things, and it becomes so natural for them when they start doing this at a young age. So thank you for this. It's awesome.
Thank you.
I'd like to add that I
Couple of thoughts that I had. First, thanks for doing it. Thanks for carrying through and for keeping it going even during our darkest days. And sorry you got bumped twice too. We all did, in a sense, but I am sorry that happens because this is so important. I think the biggest takeaway I had from this was that you're meeting the kids where they, they learn. They learned this technology and all this so much earlier. And in many cases, they're so much better at it than, than we are, right? Because they just, their, their mind, it's like learning a language. You can do that better at a younger age. We don't have the influences from the outside that block you from being able to learn. So I, I think that's really great, and I think you're building skills, like you were talking about, the critical thinking and well beyond just the robotics, the, the cooperation piece, all of that. So that's really awesome. I wonder if this is a trend in other districts that you, that you've seen at all? Have you seen any of that?
So I, I can't reference specific districts, but I know from reading about this competition that we use the missions from. A lot of schools utilize the, the age group that I, I use the missions for, it's called the Pioneer Cup. So there are many schools that participate, not just in the United States, but all across the world. So it's definitely something that's growing. I can't give you specific districts locally. But I, I do know that there is a, a general thought that this is good for students. It is a knack, a natural extension of what we do in Ram Quest. You know, some of the things that you mentioned, cooperation and things like that. A lot of people call them soft skills, but they're actually some of the most important skills. And we focus a lot on them. Obviously, we work on science and engineering and lots of activities that are, they're science-connected, but we also really work on a lot of those soft skills because they are so important, not just in school, but in all aspects of life.
Yeah, in life. So I would think that, that maybe this will though, gain some traction, not only here, but in other places. And it will be nice for Springfield to be a leader again and, and gain some traction. I wonder if there won't be some grant money that doesn't become available also to maybe help so that you could have smaller, smaller cohorts if you had more mats or, or Chromebooks even. But I think we have plenty of those, but I, I wonder if maybe that's not going to be an option that will help. I was also thinking when you were saying about the parents and the students being happy at the end. Are you doing any kind of post-survey or any kind of interview or anything at the end that maybe you can get that information?
Sure, I can definitely do that.
Maybe something, maybe something like that. And, you know, I, I think if you were to go to other schools, you know, in our district, and then maybe have a huge event at the end, it's just a natural predecessor to the, to the VEX robots. And in fact, Karen had leaned over at one point and said, maybe those students that are in the VEX could come back and even help you and, and in some way mentor the students that are in your group. There's so many, you have so many opportunities and so many doors to open with us. So I just want to say thank you and thank you for hanging in during our dark days, as I said, to, to keep this alive and going. Thanks so much.
All right. I would have, I would like to talk about. Thank you. First of all, engaging our students in learning is so desperately what we're trying to do these days. And this is the kind of activity that gets students interested. You said, I love that you do it on a Monday too. Get them, get them coming in on Monday. And, and Mr. Laurie, thank you very much. I've worked with you. And we just give you permission to do something like, hey, here's Ram Quest, take off. And you are that type of flourishing teacher that just looks for an opportunity and, and, and brings this to us. And, and Dr. Moyer, for, you know, being that kind of person saying, yes, you know, we could do this. These, you refer to them, Mr. Laurie, as soft skills. I think of them as the non-measurables. We spend so much of what we're doing here looking at data and, and what, what is measurable in data. But there's so much that is not measurable, that is so valuable to our students. So I had the opportunity to, to be at that extracurricular meeting so to, you know, to view this ahead of time and was just, you know, kind of blown away then, and I, I still am now. So, you know, I, I really hope that we can continue to, to grow this program. And, and it's only because we have, you know, staff that are willing to take this on. So thank you very much.
Yeah, I'd also like to add that I'm, I'm really blown away with this, and it's such a young age that these kids are participating in, and I, I wonder how much of this gets out to the community in general of what you're accomplishing. It's just amazing, and it's made me feel completely stupid. So anyway, congratulations and you're doing a great job.
Thank you very much.
Any additional comments or questions?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Laurie. Thank you, Dr. Moyer.
Thank you.
All right. So next up for our second presentation, I know this has been discussed a couple of times at Community Relations, but excited to have our Springfield Booster Club representatives coming to present on an opportunity. This is Ram Country.
Can you hear me now? Okay. So my name is Shelby Kishira, and I'm current Vice President of the Springfield Booster Club, but soon to be ex-Vice President because my son has graduated. Even though he is graduating, I am committed to staying on with this Ram Country project until I can find somebody else that is as interested in as I am. And if I can't find anyone else, then my sister will be taking it over whenever her son is in high school. So I know that we spoke earlier in the year at the President's Council Meeting, and I had explained to some of you what this project was. But I wanted to explain to everybody else what it was. It's a community unity project, and the Booster Club is just the people that are coordinating it. It came about because my son, when he was very little, said, why does Boyer Town have bears? Why don't we have rams? And I was like, I, I don't know. And I was way too busy being a working mom to worry about why we didn't have rams. And then my nephew said, why don't we have rams? And I thought, well, I don't know. Why don't we have rams? So I contacted this is a project, I contacted Boyer Town, the same, the community group that did the bears in Boyer Town. I didn't realize it is an ongoing project. It was started, I think, like 20 some years ago, and they will still sell you bears today. So this project is similar to the Boyer Town Bear Project, except we are rams. The rams are going to be purchased by community organizations, PTOs, businesses. I think Upper Providence was, a township was considering, like seeing how much, if they could just buy their ram. I said, don't buy it yet because there might be a, a community group that wants to put a ram in your, in your park. So just, just hold on. But it is a primed fiberglass ram, ready to paint. It's approximately 34 inches tall by 49 inches long. I did order them with flanges. You can buy them with flanges or without to have them be able to be bolted to, to the ground. We decided that we wanted each ram to come with a bronze plaque that will identify the purchaser or sponsor and artist if they request the artist to be, to be named. The plaque may also be used as a memorial. The plaque is, can be up to three lines of, of information can be included on the plaque. The Western Center will be clear coating the rams after they are painted. It's the purchaser's responsibility to have the ram painted. I know some of the PTOs will have their, 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 their students paint their rams. After they are painted, I will take them to the Western Center to have clear coated by their auto service center, or not service center, auto repair center. And, and the ram will, will be shipped for storage at the stadium until they are picked up by the purchaser or artist. For those organizations that don't want to paint their own ram, for example, the Booster Club is going to purchase a ram, and nobody on the Booster Club has any artistic talent whatsoever. So we do have local, local artists that are willing to paint rams. So if people want to buy a ram and don't want to paint it, we can, we can arrange for that for, for a cost. And the cost will be depending on how much detail you want on your ram. What is not included in the ram? The cement pad or slab. The, the company that does the fabrication of the ram suggests that they be attached to a slab of some kind, not just into the ground. If, if there's not a slab already there, the pad should be approximately four feet by six feet. And the purchaser can use whoever they want to to install the pad. If they are installing the pad on school district property, then it has to be an approved contractor. I do have a, a name of an approved contractor in my packet for people. So if they purchase a ram, they, you know, oh, this is who I should use. No, you, you can use that person, but you can use whoever you want. And the artwork for the ram is also not included in the cost. And if you want one of our local artists to paint the ram, it's going to be between $200 and $500. I think I said that before. And the installation of the ram and the plaque is also not included, although I will volunteer my husband to do that because it's just a matter of screwing in four screws into the, into the cement. So we'll be able to work with, you know, there's some organizations that I could think like, I don't, they, they don't want to have it. They just want to buy a ram and give us a design, and then we'll take it from there. This is going to be a multi-year project. I don't, you know, but if we don't ever get this project started, it will never be finished. So I don't think that we're going to see a whole herd of rams being around town in the next year. But like I said, we have to, we have to start somewhere. I do want to specifically thank Erin Crew, who has helped promote this project. I'm sure that you've seen it go out in her updates. And Robert Hunter, who is helping us navigate some of the logistics. The rams are going to be delivered by common carrier. I work, I can't be at the, at the stadium when the common carrier comes to deliver these rams, so he's going to help me out with that. I have to say that all municipalities that comprise Springfield were extremely excited about this. They just said if it's going to be on, on private property, that they, it has to be offset about 12 feet from, from the streets to avoid any conflict with traffic. So does anyone, I know that there were some questions. Does anyone have any questions about this project?
Sure. Could, I believe when we first heard from you,
Yes.
there's going to be an art submission process, right? So somebody can't just buy a ram and do with it what they please.
Yes. So there's an art submission process. We want them, they can be patriotic, but not political. We, the goal of this project is for unity. We, so there will be an art submission project, a, a process for, for approval. And I, if I, if there's anything that's like, oh, I don't know, I'll take it to the, the Booster Club, and then if it goes, if we still can't decide, then we'll bring it to you and say, you know, what do you guys think? We, what do you guys think? So hopefully, we won't get in too much trouble. Okay?
Shelby, a couple more things to recap. I obviously, you know, we were, I was on the President's Council, and then we've talked about this at Community Relations. Just for the rest of this group, can you share what the price is going to be?
Okay, it's going to be $1,800 per ram. And like I said, it includes, includes the ram, the plaque, and the priming, and the, and the clear coating.
And so the clear coating at the Western Center?
Yeah, we will be paying for that, the Booster Club.
Okay. Have you spoken with Chuck over there? Okay. Have you spoken with Chuck over there recently by any chance?
I spoke with him in the fall. Why has something changed?
Yeah, so we had a, we had a, a J O C meeting in the beginning of March and he vaguely recalled my reference when I asked about this, about talking with you. So I would just highly suggest that if you could maybe reach out to him to confirm with those details and what that's going to be.
When I was putting this all together, I, I, I didn't know what I didn't know, so I went out to everyone.
Sure.
Um, so I should probably circle back.
He knew, I brought it to his attention, so he knows that you're going to um, be reaching out to confirm details. So
Okay.
I, I would, um, recommend that. Um, and how many, and oh, let me go back to, they must be secured. So you have the flaps.
The flanges, yes.
So, yes, the flanges. So if they're not going to be on a new slab that a purchaser is going to install, then they would be going on another area of concrete.
Right.
They do need to be secured that you're going to.
Yes, they will need, they will be secure to either concrete or asphalt somehow with the, the bolts.
Okay. And how many have been sold so far?
Well, so far, two have been sold, have been sold. Um, we have them ordered. And we have a lot of home and schools that are, it's a budget situation. The budget for this year has already been determined. Um, so I have a lot of home and schools, um, that are waiting to see if there's any money left over in the budget. If not, they will be purchased in September.
Okay. And is it my understanding that four are delivered at one time? Or we, did we go?
They could deliver anywhere from one to four.
So these two that are sold, are they already ordered?
They are, are already ordered and we, we purchased another, that the, this, the Booster Club ordered three
Okay.
to stay on shipping.
Okay, so those three, what's the lag time from the time you order?
It's right now because of COVID, it's six, sixteen to twenty weeks.
Okay.
So it's, they're not going to be even coming till in the middle of summertime and then um, the PTO was like, well, wait till the middle of summertime. I said, I will, I'll keep them in my house if, if it's a problem keeping it at the stadium.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
So if someone wants to, oh, I'm sorry, were you? If someone decides they want to purchase one or a group, are there designated spots for them?
No, but I can suggest some spots, but you would, I mean, if it was going to be, if you wanted it to be in Limerick Township, like that, 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 that Limerick Township was not opposed to having them in their, in their parks. Um, so you would just obviously have to get the permission and go through.
Okay, so there's, there's people you can talk to saying.
Yes. Yeah, there's a list, on the packet, there's a list of who you can contact if you want to put it someplace.
Okay.
And obviously, Bob Hunter, you would contact if you wanted to put it on, on school property.
Yeah, I mean, if there's, you know, if each, assuming each of the schools might want one, you know, will there be, Bob have a running list of potential spots?
I, I'm not sure what I, I mean, if each school wants one, I, I'm assuming that the school would want to put it
Yeah.
on their school property. That's what I'm assuming. But if they didn't, like, just say that this year's fourth grade class wants to do one. And then next year's fourth grade class wants to do one. Maybe they don't want two rams on the property, but maybe Limerick Elementary wants to put one at, at Mandrake Park and then they have to contact, um, Limerick Township.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Okay. Couple of questions here.
Okay.
These have been sold to the home and school or being sold to individuals within the community?
Either.
So I think as far as putting on school, we can somewhat define the requirements.
I would think that only home and school would put them on the school property. I wouldn't, yes.
If it's a public, I mean, if it's a private owner, if they want to paint it purple, I don't know how we tell them not to paint it purple.
Um, well, the, the Booster Club is, 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 I mean, if they want to paint it purple, they could absolutely paint it purple. What they can't do is put, you know, defamatory comments on it. Well, we're not going to, I mean, now, if they purchase one
Right.
and they tell me they're painting it with, you know, rainbows and daisies, and they do not paint it with rainbow and daisies, what, what's our recourse? Well, I I, I wouldn't take it to the Western Center to get to get clear coded. But could they, if they, if they held the ram hostage and it took it their, their own place, then I, you know?
Yeah, I'm just trying, I'm just trying to see where the line of liability goes this way and not that way. So my concern is if an individual purchased a ram, a private residence.
Okay, like someone on the, uh, we thought like, I go down Main Street and I see these beautiful houses on, making, oh, a ram on that corner would look so nice.
So where does the school district come into play? They would be delivered to the district and then the?
They would be delivered to the district. I promised, um, Bob that he wouldn't have more than three or four rams in storage at the same time. If I had to pick them up and store them at my house, I would. And then I would deliver it to the purchaser or the artist. If they, if they chose to have someone else paint it. But just say the purchaser, the individual purchased it and they wanted to paint it. I, whenever they order the ram, they're going to tell me what their theme of their ram is. And that's not to say that we couldn't have two rams that were patriotic, that were like flags. Uh, that's, that's fine because the flag could, but, um, you know, I don't want to have nine rams that are flags. I just, you know, I'm trying to spread the themes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, one additional follow-up question. So I know that you mentioned Ms. Crew has been marketing this as part of her weekly updates. Um, since we're talking specifically about home and school, I'm wondering, has there been any mass communication that has gone specifically to home and school presidents or home and school boards? Because I know when we were in the extracurricular meeting, there was a public comment made by a parent in the district who brought up some concern around, listen, this would be wonderful to have, right? If each home and school has the means to buy this for their elementary school or sponsors for their elementary school, that's a wonderful thing. But there was concern that there may not be, um, the same headcount or capacity, fundraising capacity at each school. And so if there is interest from schools, yet maybe there are some challenges with raising the money. I'm, I'm glad to hear this is a multi-year project because it gives them time.
Absolutely.
It gives them some time. But do we know overall, like, what is the interest from home and schools around putting these on potential school property?
Um, I heard from six of, oh no, I've heard from four of the home and schools, excuse me, that they are, they are interested, so. Um, and it, yes, they, they have been communicated, um, through the President's Council Meeting. And then if, as a follow-up to the President, President's Council Meeting also. So, yeah. Anything else?
I just wanted to put out a challenge to my fellow school board members, um, that it would be great to buy a ram and I'm happy to split it with you. I'm happy to put up two hundred. So.
Are you painting it?
Yeah, I got the panel to do it. Yeah, we got it. So that's my challenge to you all.
Yeah, you don't, yeah. Thank you.
I'll second your two hundred. Probably we could resume. We take that money and buy a couple of rams.
But here's the question, what's the theme of your ram going to be cut?
No Zoom?
It's going to be decoupaged pictures of.
Pictures, they've caused pictures of the zoom, yeah.
Question is, will the, will the ram have a mask on? Can we discuss that?
Will the ram have what?
A mask on it.
A mask on?
Yeah. I'd like to.
Which should, it should this year. It really should.
Ms. Deardorff, I'll, I'll, I'm at your two hundred. I'm in.
I'm completely supportive of you. However, I'm out. I, I've, I've given quite a bit to Springford. I'm out. I don't like any of this other chatter that's going around. I will support it. I will get the word out. I will do all of that. I'm not committing to more than that.
Okay, well, if you have any questions, just let me know. You, you know.
All right, hold on. So we're at six hundred. Who else? Anybody else?
Oh, for sure.
All right, it's eight hundred.
I'm in.
I'm in.
That's a thousand.
I'm in.
I'm in.
I'll know where you are, but we'll take it. It's twelve hundred. It's twelve hundred.
Wendy, I'm in.
I'm in.
Twelve hundred. We need six hundred more. Two hundred of the board members, eighteen hundred last time I graduated from engineering school. All right? Eighteen hundred.
Confused. I'm tired. I'll need a little bit of time.
Yeah, no one, I, I'm, I'm not here to, I'm not here to sell you rams. I'm just going to let you know what I'm.
I'm just trying to have a little fun.
Yeah.
Stay there. All right, I'm in for four hundred.
We could always give a solicitor assist on that one.
Oh, a solicitor.
That is Solicitor Scholarship. I'll take the Solicitor Scholarship and split it with you.
Oh, the Art Department was considering part, like going in and purchasing.
Let us, let us do this. All right. So where are we at right now? We're at sixteen hundred?
Is that with the Solicitor Scholarship that's, that I'm going to accept? No, he's going to do one. I'm going to do one.
Now we're done. Eighteen hundred. We're in.
We're good.
Bang the gavel.
Boom. If I could drop this mic. If you find your, if you find your short, I can give you some more too.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you so much.
No more breakfasts, though. I'm, I'm tapped out now.
All right. He doesn't pay anyway.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Moving to something equally as exciting, we have an action item on the agenda. So moving to, um, point three here, the administration recommends the purchase of networking equipment, wiring and installation via the E-rate program. The quotes were received through E-rate bid process. The total cost will not exceed three hundred seventy thousand. This purchase is eligible for forty percent refund. This will be self-financed from the Capital Reserve Fund and then repaid from the technology budget. So do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. And then we're going to go to questions and comments.
I have, I have a question. It goes, it kind of goes back to the last meeting that we had when I asked, where is, we, we've taken out an awful lot out of Capital Reserve that technology is going to repay. Um, what, do we have those numbers?
So, Mr. Catalano, um, in addition to Mrs. Zazowski's question, maybe you can give some context from the curriculum meeting. I know that you shared um, a couple of points. Number one, I think, uh, that this project was allocated two hundred fifty thousand. Um, we talked about capital, coming out of CapEx, repaid over five years, and then this refund potentially being about a hundred forty-seven thousand, which would put you under budget. So in addition to Mrs. Zazowski's question, could you give some context to the broader board around what you shared in the curriculum meeting?
Yes, thank you. This project is to accommodate the tenth and eleventh grade wing of the ten-twelve center. That equipment is five and six years old. We've been planning for this since that's initial deployment five years ago. Last year, we outfitted the ninth grade center, the eighth grade center, and flexed for our one-to-one deployment in those buildings. Uh, as it comes to repayment of Capital Reserve Funds to Technology, but I had to defer to Mr. Fink on that one. Uh, he's aware of those numbers, but this is all part of our, our rolling budget, uh, operating costs.
Do we, do we have that number yet, though? Do we have that, that number?
This is Jim.
Oh, I'm sorry.
What number is it that you're looking for, Mrs. Zazowski?
I'm, I'm wondering where we're at with what technology needs to pay back to Capital Reserve. Is?
As part of their twenty-year rolling plan, currently, each year, the Technology Department from their general fund, uh, budget pays back approximately two and a half million dollars for equipment that they have purchased uh, since we started this program, two thousand and sixteen.
And so there, there is progress being made, even though we seem to be adding a number.
The progress is constant and, and anything that's added to that is added to the, uh, to the long-term repayment plan. So essentially what happens is if we have a piece of equipment uh, that we purchased today, depending on whatever the useful life of that equipment is, that amount is paid back over the time and put back into the Capital Reserve, so that when it's time to renew that, we have the money back in the bank to pay for the renewal or to pay for the replacement of that product as it outdates.
Okay, thanks.
Are there additional questions or comments? I just wanted to, uh, reiterate that this was, the numbers that you mentioned was it's a three hundred and seventy thousand dollar purchase, but because he's submitting the refund, it'll come down to about two hundred twenty-five thousand? Is that? Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
And the reason this is on the agenda tonight as an action item is I think Mr. Catalano is tied to a pretty, um, tight timeline. Yeah, for tomorrow. Yeah, so. So work on investment.
Okay. Any additional questions or comments?
All right.
Would recommend going forward, Mr. Catalano, that we put up some additional information in here where the equipment will be installed, the utilized. In this case, the eleven, ten-eleventh wing of the ten-twelve center, I think would help, um, the board.
I think that's good. And, and also did this date just come up really quickly or did we not know about it in February?
From my understanding, um, it's, it's a pretty strenuous process you have to go through to get this rebate. And I think, um, Scalano and Dr. Wright did go to Harrisburg to go through a class for this. And when you're taking other people's money, you have to do it within the timeline that they define, which is, was pretty tight. So that's why it's here tonight for, as an action item for approval.
All right. So if we don't have any additional questions or comment, we can move on to vote. So all those in favor of the action item, vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. All right. So moving on to board and committee reports, we'll start with our student rep reports. Ms. McVeigh and Ms. Mingle.
Thank you, Ms. Herman's. Um, I believe we have a presentation to display tonight. Well, looks like there might be some technical difficulties with the presentation. Um, but it, it's not very visual heavy, so I will get right into it. Um, so some recent events that we have to recount from the past couple of months. On the Great Kindness Challenge was held throughout the district from January twenty-fourth to the twenty-eighth. Um, Black History Month was observed by the district. Um, and RCTV has published a spotlight video of events um, from this month that is available, um, on the website. We recently observed President's Day weekend with schools closed on February eighteenth and February twenty-first. Um, there was a sophomore FPC parent presentation on February sixteenth. Um, and it was National School Counselor Week from February sixth to the eleventh. So we made sure to recognize our school counselors for all the work that they do. And we did pass the milestone of the one hundredth day of school on February ninth. Um, and then we have a myriad of sports news to recount. Um, so congratulations to the girls' basketball team for becoming pack champions. Um, congratulations, and this is breaking news, to Mason Doan for becoming the bowling state champion. I believe that is the first time in Springford history that that has been achieved. Um, congratulations to Nene Makonchu for winning the state championship in the high jump for track and field. Um, and congratulations to, um, several individual swim team members, um, for becoming pack champions. And those swim team members are um, Maris Sadowski, Sydney Kohler, Abby Kohler, and Ashley Goodstall. Um, congratulations to the wrestling team for becoming pack champions and District One champions. Um, and individual wrestlers that, um, placed there were Cole Smith, Quinn Smith, and Ryan Lapore. Um, and then to end off the sports news, um, just wanted to add that next month, Mr. McDaniel will be here with all these sports champions to honor their achievements, um, at the board meeting. Um, and I will turn it over to Aditi now for some more recent events and some upcoming events.
Good evening, everyone. Um, so for other recent events that we had, we had the ASVAB testing on February twenty-fourth. We had Read Across America Week from March first to March eleventh. Um, and that was done, uh, an excellent job done by the elementary school and middle school students. Additionally, we had the Spring Musical Mama Mia, uh, which was open to audiences on March fourth and March fifth. We had the Snap Prom Dress Boutique, um, which is actually still open until May twenty, uh, two thousand twenty-two. Um, also, spring sports began on March seventh. And throughout the month of March, um, we've been having Career Month presentations and speakers, which has been presented by the Future Planning Center. Um, we also had applications open for the Ireland and German Foreign Exchange Programs. Uh, the junior prom was postponed to Friday, April eighth at six thirty PM. Additionally, as you had mentioned, uh, today was Rock Your Socks Day in support of, uh, Down Syndrome. And, um, one good news we have is we would like to congratulate, uh, the Rampage Student Newspaper for placing second in the in the PA Student Media Awards in the ongoing news coverage section. So that is one milestone. And additionally, for some upcoming events, we have the Spring College and Career Fair this Wednesday on the twenty-third. We also have the District String Jamboree on March thirty-first. And that is the same date that the third marking period will conclude. The fourth marking period will commence on April first, and there will be an ACT exam administered at the ten twelve center on April second. The National Honor Society induction ceremony will take place on the seventh of April. Spring break will be on April fourteenth to eighteenth. We have Unity Day on the twenty-sixth of April. And tickets for the senior prom will be sold during lunches throughout the month of April. And applications for the next student representative to the school board are now open to sophomores. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
Fine question. Great job, by the way. Very informative. Good to see you both. Will the athletes be here or just Mickey McDaniel? Not that seeing Mickey is not a lovely thing. It's just.
I think he will be here with the athletes.
Thank you.
And I'll just say, there's so much to recognize in your update, but I know that there were a few handful of board members that actually attended that Mama Mia presentation and calling them. Sorry, we didn't get them to come and do the, the skit that we wanted to do.
I'm okay with it. I got to see the whole thing.
Yes. Yeah. And just to say, like, congratulations to everyone involved, from the, the actors to the pit band, to the staging and the lighting, just amazing production. All right. Well, with that said, we're gonna move on to extracurricular with Mr. Schaefer.
We did not meet in March, but we will be meeting Tuesday, April the fifth, six thirty PM in the district office.
Okay, great.
Was that, that might have been an error, because we did meet for community relations.
Yeah.
In March. Is that correct?
We did.
We did. So I can give that report next week, but.
We were on schedule to report out next week for community relations.
We are. Okay. All right. Thank you.
We're back to every other month for extracurricular.
We're alternating with extracurricular. Community relations is alternating.
Yeah, we discussed that.
Yes.
It was very heated exchange.
Okay, it works out well.
Ms. Earl, update with policy?
Yeah, we met on the fourteenth, Monday, the fourteenth, and we went through quite a bit of materials. We reviewed sixteen policies, and they've been sent off to solicitor, and barring any substantial issues, they'll be here for a meeting for first reading in an April meeting. You'll also see on tonight's agenda, five policies that are here for first reading from February, and twenty policies are on there for rescinding or retirement. And I just want to make clear to our community, these aren't policies that we're just doing away with. These are all four and five hundred series policies that have either been incorporated in with the three hundred series that, because there was a lot of redundancy. Or they are policies that are redundant to other new policies that have been updated. So that just because you see something on there that's being retired, that doesn't mean that we are dismissing that issue. So I just want to make that clear to everybody. We have, for April meeting, we have ten more policies, so we're gonna keep you busy for the next few months. That's it.
Thank you. Does anyone have questions for Ms. Earl? Okay, so then we'll move on to curriculum and technology. Dr. Wright?
Thank you very much. Curriculum and technology, or as Mr. Catalano likes to say, Technology and Curriculum Committee met on Monday, March fourteenth at seven thirty. It was a long meeting, and it lasted until almost nine thirty. Lots of good stuff. With technology, we talked about, Mr. Catalano talked about the E-rate network. Also, summer professional development for the technology department will be offering training to teachers this summer on various topics to support teachers with professional development. There will be a time clock refresh. That's the clocks that they use for timekeeping, for checking when people check in. And also, the summer refresh, student, staff, and administrative devices will be purchased in preparation, as, I'm sorry, prepared for the twelve-year equipment plan. Then we moved on to curriculum. Dr. Moyer was there and gave a presentation on the summer program for our English language learners and the challenges and, and the beauty of the program and our students and how we can support and encourage them over the summer. There will be some resources available to them. Mrs. Gardi spoke about the curriculum, shared that several courses have been reviewed this year. The review has included data review, updated curriculum maps, and presented requests for new and updated resources. She had a lot. We kept her very busy, talked about a lot of the materials that we need to order that you'll see on the agenda to keep up with our seven-year curriculum plan there. And also, Mrs. Gardi presented the, the academic data presentation, the twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-one PSSA and Keystone data and trends. So that was the information. The, the data was just, had just recently been released on PSSA and Keystone. So we're taking a look at it. That will be presented at the next board meeting, that, that data. So and then also, we're looking at the Summer Rams staffing update for that. And Summer Rams staffing will be on, is also on the board agenda to vote on next week. So that was it. Questions?
Okay. Doesn't look like there are any. Thank you, Dr. Wright. Next up, Mr. Jackson with finance.
Thank you, Ms. Herman's. The Finance Committee met on March eighth. And some of the items discussed was based on executive reports from, excuse me, reports through February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-two. Liquidity is one hundred and one million dollars ahead of plan. Sorry, ahead of plan due to EIT and the transfer tax. Revenue ahead of budget expectations primarily due to the EIT and the transfer, the transfer tax revenues. Real estate tax revenue, almost a million dollars over budget. This is exceptional and way off the trend. Earn income taxes, four hundred fifty thousand dollars above the prior year, unpaid to do approximately twelve to twelve point five million dollars. Food service, we, we served five hundred and six thousand meals versus three hundred and forty thousand from last year. Cost of food and supplies continued, continued to increase as percentage of sales. February cost of goods was sold at twenty-nine point twenty-four percent versus twenty-six point twenty-eight percent in February twenty twenty. The budget books are back except for special education. Currently, there is a five point one million dollar gap down from the six point four million dollar for the preliminary budget. This calculates for tax impact, four point three six percent for the twenty-two, twenty-three year. This is far from over. We have a lot, a lot more work to do. Frontline was discussed, frontline forecasting, I'm sorry, frontline forecast five. It's a forecast model. And that will be added to the March agenda. It's a budget and software that I think we need, or we feel like we need in place from a functionality and succession perspective. Cost is about thirty thousand dollars per year on a five-year agreement with license, and we tied this into our existing HR suite package renewal. And that's on the agenda. And those were the major items for finance.
Questions or comments for Mr. Jackson?
So I was gonna bring this up later, but so the, the frontline for the, the business office, that's all news, that's a new expenditure, correct? Is that new for frontline or?
No, it's tied into, I'm sorry. It's tied into the, our overall package that, that we're purchasing with. It's the same vendor.
For clarity, Mr. Schaefer, we do have the HR software suite from frontline currently would be adding on the functionality for the Forecast Five, Forecast and Budgeting Model. So the answer is yes, this is a new expenditure. That was the long way to say yes. Okay, that's great. That's okay. No, no worries. I'm mildly familiar with the company. Okay, and, and also just like the increases that we're agreeing to for a five-year commitment average out both for the HR portion and the business office portion at an aggregate of around four percent or a delta over a five-year period of a seventeen percent increase. And then is that why we're, we're budgeting or we're contracting on a five-year basis? Because it doesn't seem like the price is fixed. We're, we're agreeing to a four percent increase year over year. There is a four percent increase year over year for both sets of packages. That is correct. Doing a shorter model, as you know from the software industry, you're not going to get that initial bang price. The initial bang price for the Forecast Five was approximately thirty-four thousand for one year. Okay, so the piece for my ears would be, we negotiated this the best we can, and we feel like this is the best we can do. That is correct. Thank you.
Any additional questions?
Yeah, so we talked a little bit about this when we were there at finance. We do. Do you want to explain why we do need to have this in place now? I guess with the concerns about the budget, but now we're adding in a new expenditure. What, what is the importance of having this in place? I don't know if Mr. Fink or Mr. Jackson, who wants to take that?
I'm happy to talk to that. Although a history lesson would have to be brought up too, and that is, you know, six years when I arrived here at the district, there really was no good budgeting and forecasting tool that was built specifically for school districts and that would bolt on to our current ERP system, Skyward. So the budgeting tool that we use now was built by me and my staff from scratch using Excel, which is very antiquated, as you can imagine. It's very difficult to use, and frankly, I am probably the only one in the district who really knows how that works. What this does is similar to larger packages like SAP or Experian or those types of things. I'm sorry, Oracle, like those types of packages. They have very robust forecasting tools. However, most school district reporting systems do not. This will bolt on perfectly to Skyward or other school-based softwares as well. It comes with a support staff team, so God forbid if I'm not here for some reason, our staff in the business office can pick this up very easily with training from that staff. The tools that I've reviewed, they're very robust. They accomplish very similar things, and then some from the software, the model that I built. And I think at this time, it is, it is the best course for this district moving forward.
And have you spoken with, I want to say your counterparts, but people in your position in other districts that have used this system as well? Would they support that also?
I have specifically. I've talked to Mr. Weaver over at PV and Mr. Scrocky over at North Penn, who both use the software. In fact, they were involved in helping Forecast Five get it to where it is today development-wise. So they were involved in the whole beta process of that software package, which we reviewed, Mary David Heiser and I reviewed with Forecast Five and then me separately with those two individuals.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good.
Good. Property?
One thing I wanted to say, just as it was glazed over, speaking of the budget, the four point three six percent. I just did want to reiterate that this is a very preliminary number, and we have a lot of work ahead of us on it. In the last meeting, I asked for the dates to be presented to the community, but I just wanted to say it again. So we're still looking at April nineteenth for the presentation of the preliminary budget and then adopting that most likely at the May twenty-third. So there's still a lot of meetings to be done. I just didn't want that number to be taken as a headline and run with it. We definitely have some work ahead of us.
Thank you for that, Ms. Deardorf. And next year, you will be the Finance Chair.
You said we would do it together.
I will say one, one other thing regarding what Mr. Fink made reference to. You know, we pride ourselves on planning for the future. We have a tenure plan, whether, whether our maintenance plan, we have a twelve-year plan, we have a technology plan. This just reinforces our financial structure that we have in-house right now, because we're not going to be here forever. Mr. Fink's not going to be here forever. And it allows that growth, the succession within the district itself to keep us moving in the right direction. And with that, I'll move into property. Property meeting was held on March eighth at seven thirty. Some of the items talked about was the Spring City Strategic Planning, which was held on March fourteenth to discuss administrative kickoff meeting with ICSR Consulting Engineers and Architects to look at what we can do to assist Spring City with their, I call it, current square footage challenges. There was also discussion regarding, say to Mr. Schaefer, the grass cutting services. We discussed the remaining two years of the current vendor, which is Charstown Landscaping, and the annual increases. They, they proposed an annual increase to offset the cost across the board in labor, equipment, and fuel expenses. The amendment will be on the agenda for approval. From an operational perspective, the trash and recycling contract renewal, we discussed the public bids from February twenty-third, twenty twenty-two. Waste management was a low bid for trash and recycling. Republic Service was the low bid for dumpster services. The item is on the agenda for approval. High school bus stop traffic. There are some traffic concerns that were brought about, Dr. Collier. So we presented a drone video at this dismissal for everyone who attended the meeting and who was on Zoom. A new parking plan will be presented at door twenty-three to alleviate some of the traffic congestion will be implemented at the start of the new year. There's also a discussion in need for additional parking in the front tier drop, and and we'll get this work done on their budget. I'm sorry, get budget numbers for turning the lawn area into a tier drop for, in the parking lot. For school police and emergency management. There was discussion around the fire drills, excavation drills, evacuation drills, Alice drills occurred, and were documented per safe school requirements. The camera system, five-year plan, integrated security system started about current camera system and service for twelve, twenty-seven, twenty-one. Progress is underway at the high school, and a strategic plan, a priority that's being constructed and will be viewed, and was reviewed on March eighteenth of this year. And that completes my report for property.
So I want to go back to that grass cutting piece. Are, are we in a contract with this company, or is this a new contract that we're negotiating?
We're in a contract.
So they already have an agreement, and that's a three-year contract, correct? And we're in year one, and we're already in agreement for the two years to follow? Is that right? And they've come back to us and want this twelve and a half percent increase because of the surge in, in, in cost for fuel and et cetera.
Yes.
But technically, technically, we already have an agreement with them without bringing that twelve and a half percent into play? Or is that, my question is, do we already have an agreement? Or is that percentage increase negotiated each year, which would then send, said to me, say to me that we truly don't have an agreement with them?
We have an agreement. This is like we've done with the Teachers Union. We've done some early birds. And we're, we're looking at what we're dealing with right now. This increases, and Mr. Hunter's on the call, I think it's like twenty-three hundred dollars per year.
I understand that, but I also don't want to set a precedent that if we have an agreement, you can still come back to us and renegotiate those terms if we're in an agreement. And the way I understand it is that we're in an agreement, so would it be okay for us to go back and renegotiate the terms? I'm not sure. I understand what's prompting it, but I'm trying to look at it from a different angle.
Could we do that? Yes. Would I recommend that? No, based on what we are right now. I trust Mr. Hunter, his opinion on this. From a cost perspective, I think we're doing what is right based on the current state. Fuel is driving everything. Fuel is driving everything, and people don't really understand that petroleum is is within many products that we purchase. So here, he brought it to our attention, and we're trying to be fair with him and the services that he provides for the district. And this is what we're putting forth. But I understand what you're saying.
Mr. Jackson, also, the meeting with Charleston Landscaping, they approached us, and they identified that they, at the current rate, that they would be operating at a loss. And our concern was not to lose this contractor who's providing services for us.
Do we necessarily have to go out two years, though, on this to have this increase in 2020? We don't know what 2023 is going to bring yet.
We lock ourselves in now.
But we're really not locked in, because we thought we were locked in, but now we're not. So if we're not, I would hesitate to do it for two years.
Just so $2,300 increase puts them underwater? Is that what I just heard?
No, the the amount, the actual amount is an $8,090 increase. The 12 and a half percent is $8,090 over 26 cuts. So for that, for that next year, this increase is is $8,000. That puts them out of business that they're operating below a profit margin.
It's on the table for approval. If the board so feels that they don't want to prove it, Elon takes five votes.
Any additional questions or comments before moving on to MCIU? Dr. Wright?
Hi, thank you. Before I move on to the MCIU, I did neglect to say that the Curriculum and Technology Committee next meets on April 11th at 7:30 PM at the admin building. So moving on to highlights from the MCIU meeting of February 23rd. This was deferred, this information from a prior meeting. The Montgomery County Workforce Development Program recently received a $100,000 grant to help support this growing program that assists secondary students in Montgomery County explore and prepare for employment opportunities. Our MCIU Assistant Director of the Office of Student Services was recently featured on KYW News Radio. So there's, good for them. The MCIU Board approved a memorandum of understanding between the MCIU Board of Directors and the Education Association Regarding Retirement Incentive Program. The Board approved the following, the Head Start Budget and the Transportation Services Budget and Facilities and Operations Budget. The Office of Community and Government Relations provided an overview of Governor Wolf's 2223 Proposed Budget. The $43.7 billion plan includes $20.3 billion for education with increases in basic education funding, special education, pre-K counts, Head Start Supplemental Career, Technical Education, and Student Transportation. And additionally, the MCIU Board reviewed the agenda and reports from the Head Start Policy Council meeting. So we will meet again on Wednesday, March 23rd. That's this Wednesday at 6:45 PM. And on Wednesday, April 20th, the Education Diversity Fair at MCIU takes place in at the Lafayette Street Building from 5:30 to 7:30 PM. And on Monday, April 25th, we have to remember there is PSBA Day on the Hill. I don't know if anybody wants to talk about that at some point, but that is the Capitol Hill for the Pennsylvania School Board Association on April 25th. And our next meeting will be, oh, I already said that, this Wednesday. That's it. Any questions?
Okay, thank you, Dr. Wright. Doesn't look like there's any in the room. So we'll move on to the Western Montgomery Career and Technology Center. Ms. Zoski, Earl or Weingarten?
Yeah, I have it. So we did meet on March 7th. We had an executive session at 6:30 to discuss personnel and more specifically, our teacher negotiations. We will be meeting again with representation in April. We were fortunate that night to have Mr. Rizzo join us at that meeting in March. As much as I appreciate Dr. Roach being there, it was enjoyable to have Mr. Rizzo there as well. Mr. Livinggood provided an update to what the ESAR funding will be used for and reviewed the building assessment study highlighting the following project. So just to clarify, they have a chunk of money from ESAR left. They have $379,000. They're going to do some areas that are of safety concerns. That's what they can do with the money, this lot of money that they have. So some floor updating, replacement in certain shop areas, installing garage door safety gates and updating the welding shop garage with garage doors, updating the surveillance system and updating the bell and PA system. That money is earmarked for that. Mr. Livinggood will provide a, he's going to put together, what I hope will be a several-year plan modeled after our 10-year plan that Mr. Hunter did share with him. Mr. Livinggood came over here to Springfield and met with Mr. Hunter that Friday. So he was able to share some of the mechanisms we have in place that certainly Mr. Jackson, Mr. Jackson has mentioned repeatedly at this table about preparing our buildings and staying on top of those. So that was a big piece of what was done. Then Mr. Smith, Chuck Smith, who I had mentioned earlier with the clear coating when Shelby was talking about the Ram project. He talked about, he talked about this recycled rides project. The collision repairs partnering with Farmers Insurance and 1-800 Recycled Rides to fix up a car for a family in need. And there will be a big reveal in the fall of 2022. This is a project that only four other schools in the US are part of, so go Western on that. We are looking for other partners in school fundraising to help with those funds, because the repairs for the automobiles are on the responsibility of the Western Center, the students there. So any help with with those repairs are good. Mr. Holtzman reported, Mr. Holtzman's our new principal over there. And I should clarify if anyone is missing this, that Mr. Livinggood is our new director and Mr. Holtzman is our new principal. Mr. Holtzman reported on the increased applications for next year. The increased certifications this year, he highlighted the Skills Over Stereotypes event and highlighted the Welding Technology Field Trip to the Miller Training Center. So 300 applications, 318 applications as of March 7th, and it closed March 15th. 100 of those were from Springfield. And I do want to point out, because I had raised this concern when we were over there, that the number of student certifications had dropped during COVID, and they did expect a natural rebound on that, which they are seeing. There are 860 student certifications right now as opposed to 499 last year. So we are seeing that bounce back. In terms of co-ops, there were 31 last year, we're at 33 this year. So we're still in that same range there. There were some other business that was taken care of during the meeting. And then under new business, I want to point out too, there is going to be, Mr. Livinggood, and he and I spoke about this, there is going to be an auction of unused equipment. He is partnering with Dyer Auction Companies. And there is a list of of equipment that is being put together by that auction company. So we should get an idea of what's there and what money can possibly be made on that to further the repairs in the building. Under new business, we did review and with the approval of the JOC, updated the safety plan, removing the masking mandate, as long as we are unmasked, and updating the wording for mask to stay and test to stay. Mr. Rizzo advised additional words need to be updated per the CDC, and Mr. Livinggood was going to make those adjustments. Mrs. Grimm is our chair there at the JOC, and she advised she's really working on establishing a committee structure over there to address some ongoing, just to get things going in the right direction and keep them moving that way. So she's looking for a next year, facilities and curriculum, adding those two in, those two committees. We already have a policy that's in place, a policy committee that Wendy, our very own Wendy, is heading up, and I'm doing the personnel piece. So Springfield is taking a lead over there at Western. So we also, as I said, as I mentioned earlier, I had mentioned about that Clear Coat project, and Mr. Smith was relatively familiar with that. I hope that you two, Shelby and Mr. Ken, connect on that now. And then Mrs. Weingarten and I also brought up that Springfield, Erin, our own Erin Crew and Community Relations, has just put together some really fabulous print and online advertisements for Springfield. And we invited the Western Center to take a look at those and start to model some of that marketing after what we have going on over here. So it was a full meeting, long meeting, and our next meeting will be Monday, April 4th. Any questions? No? Okay.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Zoski. And Mr. Rizzo with superintendent report.
Sure, just a couple of quick things. First, we're excited about the fifth, sixth, and seventh grade center hosting the district-wide Rams Rally for Ukraine Collection event throughout the month of April. Fifth, sixth, seventh grade center will be, will serve as Springfield's collection point for those seeking to donate supplies to displaced people in Ukraine. The donated items will be collected and then dropped off at the United Ukrainian American Relief Committee in Philadelphia. And you can visit the Springfield website or your weekly update emails for collection dates and times. And further information is available by contacting Dr. Koch and or Mr. Leady at the 56. Lastly, Springfield takes reports of bullying and harassment, whether directly or through Safe to Say Something, very seriously. Our administrative team and school police departments investigates reports of bullying and harassment and takes the appropriate disciplinary steps according to our board policies. Following questions brought to our board by parent last month, I did contact the eighth-grade administration and the parent who spoke to learn more about what transpired and how we can continue to support the student and their family. Through these discussions, it is my understanding that the family is supportive of the administration. We know that there is work to be done to address how our students interact with one another. This includes accepting their peers of different races, colors, classes, religious creeds, disabilities, sex, gender, or national origin. We are committed to working through these difficult conversations with our school community to provide a safe learning environment for all of our students. I do need to say that the eighth-grade center, and quite frankly, all of our buildings are filled with caring administrators and staff that are focused on growing and supporting our students. And just by way of reminder, when it comes to personnel matters and student discipline, we really aren't able to talk about those in a public forum. So it's my update. I wanted to provide that little bit of information. Thank you. That's all I have.
Questions or comments? Okay. Mr. Fitzgerald?
Oh, good evening. Just a brief update. Since last month, I'm pleased to report a lot of the federal litigation surrounding masks has gone away. Many of the cases have been dismissed. These were cases out in the western part of the state, as well as a number of cases in the eastern district. Most recently, the Perkium Valley School District within the last about 10 days or so. There is still one case that's outstanding in the Commonwealth Court, and this is a case that I think will have broader ramifications for school districts in general, whether it's about masks or something else. And that's with regard to the authority of school boards. There is a case involving a number of school districts, both in this region as well as in western Pennsylvania, where there were challenges brought surrounding whether boards have authority in the in the first place to require masks. That case is in its early stages. And I don't expect we will get much direction from the Commonwealth Court anytime soon as the defendants, which are the school districts in this case, have yet to actually respond to the complaint. So this is going to be certainly something to watch, because it's specific to a section of the school code that talks about the the powers of the school board. And certainly, as somebody who represents school boards, we are hopeful that the Commonwealth Court sees the clear language in the statute, which gives the authority to the to the school board to act accordingly. So I'll keep you posted on that as that develops out.
I just have a quick question. The cases that were thrown out are no longer being processed, just kind of leaving that single one left. Is that just because of rates made them deem them unapplicable or?
Which which case?
Like for the PV, you said there's like the, or the ones where there was multiple school boards? Like, were they just attached to rates, so therefore they've gone away?
No, it was, it was, it was complicated. The the Third Circuit decided to package together. There was two, two school districts out in the western part of the state. And then there was a case involving, I think Springfield, Delaware County. They packaged that together and allowed the Third Circuit to decide it. The PV case came on its separate, its own separate track. So it was dismissed a bit later due to the fact that it was not packaged with the Third Circuit cases. So it was really just a matter of procedure than anything else. Does that, does that answer your question?
Yeah, that answers it. But the the packaged cases, I guess, were they just thrown out because rates have come down and it's not applicable? Or was there any precedent, you know, clarification made from those cases?
They didn't give a reason as to why they were dismissing it. I suspect that that may have played a part, but it's certainly not on paper. But they were, they were dismissed as effectively being moved due to changes that were coming from from the CDC and the like.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Fitzgerald? So then we're going to go to the sections, the agenda for next week's voting meeting, and we're going to look at section 5A and B minutes. What questions or comments are there? Okay. Personnel, sections A through T.
A through?
T. We have a lot of letters, so I'm going to give it a minute just to make sure. Okay. So we're going to move on to Finance, sections A through E.
I have a question on. I guess this would be D 22 and 23. And I don't know, maybe, maybe, Tina, can you take that? There's a huge difference. Is there a huge difference in service as well? There's a huge difference in cost.
Yes, so for the first one is related to extended school year, and the second one is for school programming. The step program you're speaking of, the high school to transition. One is for school age programming, and the other one is for the summer VSY. Correct. Yes.
Just a point of clarity. Also, D 6 through 14, these are seemingly all non-budget items. They're all paid by outside sources. Okay.
I will say there's one clarification on 10. There was an error that we caught that will be corrected for the voting meeting agenda. It says that Royerford is paying for Spring City's program. They're nice, they're nice people over there, but that's not what they're doing.
Is that an assumptive close? We call that in the business. Yeah, okay.
Any additional questions with Finance, A through E?
I just want to comment too on 16. I guess that is D 16, the Chester County Intermediate Unit to do the communications audit. We've talked a lot about that, and I'll talk about that next week in our Community Relations Report. But we've talked about that at length in that committee meeting, and I do think that would be very worthwhile to do. So just wanted to comment on.
Then we're going to move on to property, property sections A through D. Then we're going to move on to property, property sections A through D. Okay. So now we are moving on to programming and curriculum. Sections A through double T. Double V, excuse me, double V, and I will give it a few moments for this.
So comment, I'm sorry. It's it appears that every one of these items are budgeted items, correct? Okay.
That's where I get it is, but this goes back to this annoying question that I have, and I'm sure I sound like a gnat about this technology, but there's a lot coming out of capital reserve. It's going to be repaid by back by that technology budget. Again, if you look at W and double V, W in particular.
I don't think we're there yet. Technically speaking, we're at double D, I believe. Are we allowed to comment on?
No, we went up to double V.
Oh, double V. You know what? I think my ears. I got to get it checked out.
She said double T first, but she meant double V.
All right, because earlier I won't anyway. All right. Yeah, 1.2 million. I was gonna, not very often we see that in this category.
Which is making me uncomfortable.
Have a little pause and, you know. I mean, are we, I guess, just we need to be certain that, I mean, first of all, this is budgeted. We knew this was going to happen. And we're sort of loaning to ourselves. And as long as our finance chair is okay with that.
And this is part of getting us on a more consistent cycle. So these purchases will happen, and correct me if I'm explaining this wrong, will happen at certain times of the year instead of spread out. So seeing this large lump sum is probably a little different than it's been presented in the past, but that allows them to focus on this piece and then later on something else. So this should be the only time we're shopping for this type of purchase. Is that correct?
Who are you looking at?
Doctor Murray. Yes. So we, a lot of the curriculum resources went through curriculum review cycle. And and so that's why we're trying to present all of those tonight. And Katie Gardner could definitely speak to that a little bit more. But I believe you might have been referring specifically to item UU. And if I'm not mistaken, and Bob Catalano, please correct me if I'm wrong. This is part of the refresh that will have that is built within the budget, the regular refresh. Moving forward, we'll have to be refreshing grades five and nine. I believe that's correct. So this is part of that planned refresh that it will regularly occur.
I think this is just going back. And that's why I'm not trying to belabor this issue, but I am because and 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 look, I get it during during the crisis and the Esther money, but where do we, I really need the whole picture. I much more of a visual person. I feel like I need to see the whole picture. This is a huge chunk of money. I'm not saying that it's not needed, but I'm also thinking that it's not like I'm not going to see it again because there's a pocket here, there's a pocket there, there's an amount here, an amount there. They have to have quite a tab with our capital reserve right now. Even though I know Esther Fund covered a lot of it, I think it's important for the board though to see that full picture of where we are and what kind of progress is being made to pay that back.
So so what I'm hearing is that you would like basically a tabist, I'm sorry.
Mrs. Askey, I would recommend contact my office tomorrow and I'll go through the entire plan with you.
No, I think it needs to be presented to the board, Mr. Fink. That way everybody is has the same understanding of the intel.
You don't want nine board members calling your office asking for reports, right?
Well, you can't be, you guys can't have coffee all together. So that would be a violation of sunshine law. Isn't that true, Mr. Fitzgerald? I'm just kidding. But no, I would say that's that's fine if the board wishes for us to present that. That's not a problem. What I can tell you, as I said before, is all these items are are included in our long-term plan regardless of whether they were initially paid for through S R funds or not. When we purchased items through S R funds, we included those new purchases in our long-term budget so they can be replenished when those goods or equipment use their use up their useful life. So all of those items are included in that long-term budget. But again, I'm happy to go through it with the with the group if you if you so choose.
That's the thing. I think if we could just put together a real simple spreadsheet that shows the year, what was spent, I think the board can. So when this comes up, so you know, the next item that comes up, the board can look at that spreadsheet and it clearly define what it is, what the cost is. And as I mentioned earlier, I think when this request is put in into the agenda, it should define clearly what that money has been spent on. That would alleviate probably a lot of questions. At least some. But I understand where Mrs. Kudraski is coming from.
Sure, we can do that and we can include that in this week's board memo.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any additional questions, A through double V?
Yeah, basic question. Why is it so many line items? What am I missing here? This is is this because we we had a meeting that didn't happen or?
Doctor Murray. No, Katie already just completed leading the literacy review for for items. So this is actually part of just kind of our annual procedures, but what you're seeing is is a curriculum review of of our secondary literacy program. And there are a lot of just resources that are being used there, which is why there are so many. Some of these are part of the regular refresh and Katie, you can definitely talk about this a little bit more as well.
I also want to say that these things at curriculum, we we they were split up on the agenda so that if there were any concerns or any questions, we could look at it just as you ask for the kind of detail, Mr. Jackson, so that we could look at them individually and as opposed to as a whole group when we're voting on them.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Wright.
Sure.
And Dr. Murray.
Okay, so we will now be moving on to conferences and workshops, section 10 A through F.
Separate A and B.
What questions and comments do you have?
I am, I'm trying to comprehend. This is one person, it's two conferences, or it's the same conference. And we paying for it twice or?
These are the Project Lead the Way, very similar to how AP courses are run when an AP course is taught. They the teacher has to attend a required training. Project Lead the Way functions very similar. So the first is for the civil engineering and architecture training, and the second is for the digital electronics core training. And these are both but items that we we budget for in preparation for any new teacher who might be new to teaching that course. So it is a required training as part of that course.
Kelly, they're both June 20th, or Dr. Murray, they're both June 20th to July 1st.
Let me check those dates. There may be an error there. Let me check that.
Hey, I'm a dumb civil engineer, so I can appreciate that. But, you know, like, it's the same dates, the same cost. I would have thought, or I would think that, just, okay, if you can clarify, Dr. Murray, I'd appreciate it.
Any additional questions or comments on conferences and workshops?
Yes, the same question I ask every time we talk about conferences and workshops. We send individuals to these conferences and or workshops. They come back with information. Do we share that information with the applicable employees? Or do we end up paying for this same conference next year? I know, you know, I'm going to ask that question.
Oh, yeah, I was ready for it.
You know, I hope that we're building a library or something.
So I would say the idea that on conference or sharing out is definitely something we do and we are interested in doing. This is a little different in that if you look at item E, that is all about Skyward updates and trainings that are breakout sessions that is intimately needed for for the people that are attending to be able to do their daily jobs using Skyward. Breakout sessions, not going to the same sessions. It's important for them to be there. The second one, F is is child accounting. Child accounting really is only for child accounting. And again, same deal with breakout sessions. Jessica and Tracy are two child accounting people, and they need to stay up to date on what's happening at those conferences. They're very specific conferences to be able to do their jobs. And even though it happens annually, the content is different.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rizzo.
Okay. Moving on to other business, section 11 A through D.
I think we need to take. I think we need to take them separately on here.
Okay. So what do you want to take separately? Just each one?
Start with A.
A, okay. Section 11A.
So just a question for that one. So we we've I've seen through the years where we have students and it shows up on students traveling, right? And the expenses are there, but there's no cost to the district incurred. That is not the case with this one. And it just made me pause. I'm certain there's good reason, but why why are we paying for travel? And that's typically the responsibility of the student and or the families or the organization that supports them.
P M E A is a conference that is explicitly outlined in our board policy that is covered by the school district. All expenses are covered by the district. There are things in that when it comes to student travel that anything beyond the state level is at the expense of the family. Up to the state level, we generally pick up the cost. So this is this is that. This is part of the P M E A festival system where they apply for districts, regions, states. There is a level beyond that. And if they make it beyond that, which would be an all east festival, that's it. That's at the expense of the of the students and their families. But up until this point, it has traditionally been covered by the district.
I heard traditionally in policy. What is it?
It's it's written in policy.
Okay, so that's my answer. This one is because it's in policy and that's that's fine. Okay.
So there's a ceiling, it has to be at for for payment by the district.
There is a ceiling in that up into the state level of a conference or a competition, it is covered by the district. Beyond the state level, it then falls to the falls to the expense of the families.
So our students who are state champions for the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, we picked up their costs and their to travel to Hershey or?
Four states, right?
Up until states.
But not including states.
In including states.
Doesn't include states?
The way this is written, it says all state ensembles. So I got to assume that's states, right? That's what we're paying for. And I think just to help, if they go on beyond that, which would be awesome, right? They're they're great. Then then those costs become on the parents, students are fundraising or something else like we traditionally see.
That is correct.
I wish them good luck.
Okay, I'm actually going to defer to Dr. Wright since we're taking these individually. And Dr. Wright, I heard you jump on Mike there.
Yes, I'd like to to talk to be there because the request is that you we nominate someone for the Montgomery County IU Board of Directors for the term beginning in July 1st. That is the 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 position that the board elected for me in January to to take over. But the IU has a different cycle than we do. So due to that, the IU requests that we make a nomination. So it's only right that it shows up again on our agenda for that. I certainly hope that the board would, you know, allow me to continue in that role. So I'll be waiting next week to find out. But I wanted to make you aware as to why that's on the agenda. Thank you.
So that's why I asked for Ms. Herman's to separate that out. We don't, we're not making a motion on this. We're just seeing that this is here, questions or discussion, and that'll be for next week. Okay, thanks.
I'll take C and D. In case you, in case you were sleeping through my committee report, the first 20 policies are being retired, rescinded because they're duplicitous with other policies. They've been combined. The next five policies are for a first read. This is nothing new to you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Earl. Any questions on what's being rescinded or being submitted for first reading? So then we will move into board comment.
I'm just curious about our the barriers that I saw last board meeting for the first time ever. Or what these serve to do, just in as one board member who's in my third term now, I've never seen something like this in it. And I'm not quite sure what the purpose is and who or why they were suggested to be here. So I don't like the message, this is my opinion, that it sends as a representative of this of this community. So I just wanted to share my comment on that.
Well, second that, Mr. Schaefer, Mr. Rizzo, did he want to respond?
I can. It might be better for Dr. Wright to respond. But if you'd rather me, Dr. Wright, I would happy to do that.
No, that that's fine. Thank you. And I I appreciate that. And I'm not there, so I really can't see what's going on. As you are aware, that one of our previous board meetings, we were concerned about you spacing and we really look to protect our our police, Springfield Police Force from any kind of interactions or concerns. There was a, we are not I not concerned specifically about the safety of the board. They, there was just a question as to whether we keep them there, remove them, what we do. And so the the decision was left, I guess, at this time for them to remain. The question next week, I think we're having presentations of students. So in that matter, we would want them to be accessible to that area, the carpeting. I miss I and they said, I can't see where they are. I'm assuming they're out there. So I certainly defer to the the board members and see that that's not, it shouldn't be an issue going forward. Thank you, though.
Well, I guess my concern here is this was a decision made without the input from the board. And it sort of leads me into my board comment. We are a board of nine individuals. Everybody has one vote. No one can jump over a big building. We all have one vote. So if there are decisions made like this, putting up this barrier, as Mr. Schaefer referenced, it should have, it should have come to the board. It shouldn't, I don't need someone making decisions for me in this particular matter. It does send a negative image that we somehow live in this glass ceiling or glass house, and we're concerned about our neighbors. We're concerned about the people that live next to me that I see in Giant and Target and at Wawa, that at the school board meeting, I am afraid of them or we are afraid of them, but we don't want to interact with them. I think this thing needs to come down. And items of this matter should not be decided without talking to the board. We are a board of nine. No one has any special powers. The powers are vote, and that's one vote per board member. Thank you.
Just to follow on that, if if that is a, in any way, shape or form, a safety barrier, then I would, I don't know what a safety barrier would be. I mean, it's a piece of nylon in between four. It's just it that can't be for safety. And I don't understand why we we should have it again, sort of, and I won't belabor the point, but thank you.
I just wanted to add that it wasn't something brought to us. I don't, I think all of us were kind of surprised to see it. I do appreciate the intention of it. However, I do agree with both of you about the perception. You know, we're a community. So I would I would support, you know, bringing it down.
So I would, I would support, you know, bringing it down as well.
Yeah, I can't get on board with the intention of it. And I'm kind of struggling with that because, you know, on one hand, we're talking about this RAM project, which we have talked about in so many different areas and talking about community unity, right? I love when you said that tonight and, and bringing us together. And this is, this is more, honestly, it's figurative. It's not something that, it, it sends a message and it's not a message of unity. And, you know, we're here to represent those people, good, bad, or in between. They're our people, that's who, that's who we're here to represent, who we're a part of. And, yeah, I was surprised when I, when I saw it before, but I certainly didn't think it was going to be here tonight.
I agree.
Any additional board comment? Okay. So then we're going to move into Public to be Heard. We didn't have anyone on Zoom or in person, but let's start this again. Is there anyone in person that would like to approach the podium? Okay. Just as a reminder, please state your first and last name, township in which you reside, and you'll have three minutes.
Megan, nice Limerick Township. I just wanted to bring to light how awesome this robotics program is. I don't know if everyone knows how special this is. My 10th grader, when he was in elementary school, we drove him all the way up to Upper Perk in order to be part of an, of a robotics program for elementary age kids. The local 4H center has also tried to start a robotics program that has kind of come and gone, and they're trying to do it again. There is nothing in the area like this. This is so cool, this is the first time I'm hearing about it, but I highly recommend that you guys get behind this because this is really special. And even though I, I would say it's great for the, to go younger, it's also like bridging that gap from fourth grade to the high school because if there's nothing five, six, seven, eight, those are the years that the kids start to figure out like what they're interested in. So being introduced to it in fourth grade and then losing it through all those middle school years would be a shame. That's all, thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room that would like to make public comment? Okay. Do we have anyone on Zoom?
Steve, you may now make a public comment. Please unmute yourself and state your first and last name as well as the township in which you live.
Hi. This is Steve Frye, 1711 Brook Drive, Royer, Suren. Anyone who's taken a basic communications course knows that if you want to convey information to an audience, you need to use terms with clear definitions, explain the unfamiliar concepts in a way that can be understood, and use sources that are readily verifiable. In contrast, if you want to confuse people, you communicate in vague terms and concepts and you don't provide sources for the information or use sources that cannot be verified. Based on experience so far, which of those two options best describe what the EDI team has been, has been doing? I mean, during a committee meeting last month, several people commented on the team's use of several undefined terms in a revised policy as well as in their most recent presentation. This includes terms in their mission statement and action plan. Even though there were people involved in the project in the room, no one clarified the meaning of the terms that the public questioned. Similarly, people commented after the last EDI presentation about the lack of sourcing for some of the core claims made in the presentation. Yeah, we still don't know what those are. So it continues to give the impression that the project is possibly more about politics than principles. Principles would require a clear definition of key terms in order to implement and run the project. A project would also need to have a clear definition of what the end product is and how they intend to achieve it. That still seems to be lacking as well. So while I continue to hope for a positive outcome for all students from this project, there are still many things that make it seem like it's more about politics than principles. Thank you.
Kim Anderson, you may now make a public comment. Please unmute yourself and state your first and last name as well as the township in which you live.
Hi, Kim Anderson. I'm in Upper Providence Township. I am not prepared with my comments, so bear with me here. A few topics I just wanted to discuss. The grass cutting came up. We also got a 12.5% increase just for our personal home grass cutting. So I see that this is, this is happening and I understand that. I understand Colleen's point of view on this, that we had a three-year contract. So what's the purpose of that long-term contract? What does it gain, what gains do we get from that? When things like this happen, because it seems like we're ready to just, you know, take the increase. My suggestion would be whoever is dealing with that contract to just please make some sort of negotiation that when prices of gas and things, you know, go down, that you, you know, that maybe that, that increase gets backed, gets dropped back a bit instead of a permanent increase. It seems to happen a lot just with everything, right? You get an increase and then it just keeps going into the future. It never gets dropped back when things, circumstances change. So it's something to consider. On the topic, just with that barrier that's out there, I'm not at the meeting today, I'm on the Zoom. But yeah, it is more of a perception and it's not a good perception. You know, parents have gotten passionate, but no one stormed the tables. So I'd like to think that none of you felt threatened by any parents in the audience just for their passionate views on some of the topics in the last year. And lastly, just because it's a little bit self-serving, but I have to make another plug for substitute teachers. Just because you see what's happening with grass, you see what's happening. A lot of us are experiencing, experiences with inflation and whatnot. When something is in high demand and low supply, you sometimes have to reevaluate the pay structure. So just making another plug on that because we're having an issue again, seemingly in the buildings with not enough substitute teachers. So somebody has to start to think about addressing that, how we can get more subs available to Springfield. Thank you.
At this time, there are no further public comments to be heard on Zoom.
I know it's not commonplace for us to comment on public comment, but I know we discussed correcting information, is that an accurate statement that there's a new issue with substitutes in the building, Mr. Rizzo?
It's an ongoing issue, not just in Springfield, all over the place. Ms. Lees might be able to address it a little bit further. This, this is, you know, we always have shortages of subs, but this is a particularly difficult year.
Yeah, I was, I think we've all been pretty aware that, that there's been an issue this year, but is there something new, like a further concern?
There are no additional concerns. Everybody is in short supplies for substitutes. We held a job fair on March 9th and invited the Substitute Teacher Service to come and join us. It's my understanding that they got the names of over 50 plus people to help join our sublists. So we are actively engaging to try to enhance our sublist. We're also in contact with our student teachers that are working within our school district. So when they have wrapped up their student teaching, they can sub for us immediately as well.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Motion.